Good evening, everyone, to the December 20th, 2022 City Council Meeting, City of Wyndham. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. To the council, I would like to add an item to the, I think there's only one item. That would be for.
Small cities development program grant extension.
Yep, a grant extension for the SCDP grant round that we're currently in. There were some delays on some materials used in that construction of the projects that are being undertaken, and we'd like to add that to the agenda so we can take care of that this evening.
Under old business or?
I would say under old business, as this has been a previous item. And would the council accept that a change to the agenda?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion, Jim, second, Jason, to accept the addition of the SCDP grant program item. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. So, we have in the consent agenda this evening are the minutes of the following. Council minutes, December 6th, 2022, Community Center Commission, December 12th, EDA, December 12th, Library Board, December 13th, Planning Commission, December 13th, exempt gambling permits from Bark, January 24th and February 21st of 23, regular bills. Council was to take action.
Question, Mr. Mayor, would you have any interest in moving up the discussion in old business on the agenda because of our visitors?
I'm willing to do that. If, and that would be, would be the, what item number is that?
Probably get through the consent calendar first and then enter a motion to adjourn and reorder the agenda.
Okay, can we add that to the first, Mr. Grunig? And then I'll reconsider another change to the agenda. Okay, can we make that addition? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, we did. Jim and then Jason.
For the agenda change.
For the agenda change. Okay, now, these, this item that Mr. Grunig, I believe, is referring to would be item. Yep, 14. Unless everybody would like to stay and, no, I think you'd rather not. So, with that, with that said, item number 14, under old business, we will move up to Park Recreation Horse Show Continued Discussion item. As council wished to do that, and we could move that up. Where was your recommendation, Mr. Grunig?
Right after Department Heads.
Okay. And we'd move that right after Department Heads. Consideration, and Mr. Grunig, is that a motion to do that?
Second.
Motion, Marv, second, Jason, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We are going to do some important business first. We already had the consent agenda approval, I believe, didn't we?
I would make the motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
We were waiting for that part, as amended. Okay, thank you, Mr. Grunig, for the motion, second by Jason, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, hearing none, that passes. Are we good to go, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We are going to do the swearing in. We have a new officer, Austin Lasky, who will be sworn in this evening. So, I invite you up to the front, and I'll meet you halfway. Okay. You are first, Mr. Lasky.
Police Officer, Officer Austin Lasky. As a Minnesota law enforcement officer, my fundamental duty is to serve mankind, to safeguard lives and property, to protect the innocent against deception, the weak against oppression or intimidation, and the peaceful against violence or disorder, and to respect the constitutional rights of all liberty, equality, and justice. I will keep my private life unsullied as an example to all, maintain courageous calm in the face of danger, scorn or ridicule, develop self-restraint, and be constantly mindful of the welfare of others, honest in thought and deed in both personal and official life. I will be exemplary in obeying the laws of the land and the regulations of my department. Whatever I see or hear of a confidential nature, or that is confided in me to me in my official capacity, will be kept ever secret unless revelation is necessary in the performance of my duty. I will never act officiously or permit personal feelings, prejudices, animosities, or friendships to influence my decisions. With no compromise for crime and with relentless prosecution of criminals, I will enforce the law courteously and appropriately without fear of favor, malice, or ill will, never employing unnecessary force or violence, and never accepting gratuities. I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, and I accept it as a public trust to be held. So, as long as I am true to the ethics of the police service, I will constantly strive to achieve these objectives and ideals, dedicating myself before God to my chosen profession, law enforcement.
Raise your right hand, please. Mr. Lasky, if you subscribe to the code of ethics I have just stated, and if you do swear that you will uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota, and that you will fairly and impartially enforce the laws of the United States and the state of Minnesota and the ordinances of the City of Wyndham, and that you will conduct yourself at all times so as not to create disrespect for yourself and the position you hold as police officer of the City of Wyndham, will you state, I do swear?
I do swear.
I hereby install you, Officer Austin Lasky, as an officer of the Wyndham Police Department. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good. Welcome to the room.
Thank you.
Mayor, are we gonna like have him say a little something, do a little introduction? I think normally we put him on the hot seat a little bit when they're new.
That's a, I'm glad you mentioned that, Councilperson Quaid. And tell us a little bit about yourself.
Or if you want to sing a Christmas carol.
I'm 23 years old. This is my first full-time job in law enforcement. I'm from Hibbing, Minnesota, went to college, Hibbing Community College. I moved down to Redwood Falls in September of 2021, worked in the Redwood County Jail for a year. I worked part-time in Westbrook for about eight months. The opportunity came with the Wyndham Police Department. I had met some of the guys working in Westbrook. I thought it'd be a great opportunity. I got along with all the guys well, and, you know, it's something I've always wanted to do, and it means a lot to me that they welcome me the way they have. And I spent a short, short while in the city, about a month or so, and I really enjoy it. Thanks, sir.
Well said, thank you. Okay, Department Heads. Is John doing, he's not, no, is he doing his?
No.
No.
That other side.
All right. Didn't want to be surprised. John, how you doing?
Wonderful.
Good.
John Nelson, liquor store manager. Just wanted to update the council. Back at our budget meeting, we discussed pursuing expansion onto the liquor store and redoing some of the plans that we worked on about a year and a half ago. We have finished going through the floor plans a few times, and TSP is preparing cost estimates for that. So, hopefully, the second meeting in January, we'll have someone to present to you on that, so.
Thank you, John. Thanks for the update. Okay, next, now on the agenda, we have the discussion of the Park and Recreation Horse Show Continued Discussion. I'm going to make a few comments, I believe, before we get started this evening. I would like the council to know my position on this and the public. And we welcome our guest this evening. This is a, I'll say a delicate topic. And I know that the council has received many phone calls and correspondence different ways on some, many different topics regarding horse shows, not only horse shows, expanded to other items. And there were some, some items that were covered that may not been articulated correctly about some things that I personally took phone calls on where people thought maybe that this was a way to get into full-time hockey or ice in the arena, simply not discussed. And I think, you know, some of those, those type of things, that's, that's an example, okay, of, of what we hear. And I think there's other opportunities forthcoming for this discussion. I think that personally, this council, when this topic came up a year ago, I believe, and was ran through the Park and Rec for the first time, and I have copies of the minutes here, that, you know, at, at that time, a decision was not made, and they were going to wait. And I can quote the minutes that are in here that says two to three years. Okay? Do we need to go two to three years? Does the council need to go two to three years? I don't know. But the thing that I do know is this council are, is not the group that vetted the earlier discussion at the Park and Rec. Yes, we had council liaisons at those meetings, but not the council members themselves who are now asked for that, to do that, make that decision. We were not there. I was not part of it. I did not talk to the 4H, I did not talk to the horse show folks, I did not talk to whoever the Park and Rec Committee had reached out and went to those. And so, I feel that this council was put in a position without going through that vetting process, and, and simply, my thought would be, is to send this back to Park and Rec requesting a recommendation. There's information that I, I believe is more current. I believe that everybody needs to know and understand the financial situation of this. I think we need to hear, or the Park and Rec Commission needs to hear from user groups. And I think it should be in a controlled manner of giving the user groups five minutes at the Park and Rec Commission. And we, we need to hear the to-the-point items that need to be considered. I do believe there's a resolve in this between all the user groups, and I think it would be beneficial that Park and Rec makes the decision and refers that back to the council. I would like to be there at that meeting. I would like our liaisons. I believe that is on January 11th, is that right, Commissioner Quaid? Commissioner, I'm giving you a raise. Councilmember Quaid, January 11th. That's where I would like that vetting process to be. And I believe, Steve, and correct me if I'm wrong, council members can be part of that in the audience, is that correct?
Yeah, as long as you don't have a quorum actively engaged in the discussion, you are welcome to sit in a meeting and observe that. But you cannot be involved in that discussion, otherwise you would have a quorum of council members because you have two liaisons already serving on that in a formal capacity. But the other council members, yourself, are more than welcome to sit in the audience and hear the discussion, but not engage, ask questions, that kind of thing.
I would hope that the mayor, because he doesn't have a vote, can be part of that discussion? Would that be correct?
That would be my understanding.
Okay, thank you. So, that is my, that is my thoughts. I have talked to several of maybe folks that are here tonight. I returned phone calls, anyone that has called me. I do appreciate that. And this is, you know, I hear that, well, some of these folks aren't from within city limits. Well, I think this is more of a community-wide thing. I, I think this is, and it's not only within city limits, I think it's community. I think it's our regional partners. I think it's our regional folks that live outside of city limits that are involved in this discussion. We don't allow horses or livestock in city limits, as far as I know, right? So.
Only in agriculturally zoned areas, which we have very little.
I knew you would, I knew you would know that, okay. So, you know, with that, we gotta, I, I don't know, I just think we have to look at this as a more rounded group. We have people from Comfort Call, you know, and talking about their grandkids who are in the items here. And, you know, I, I get it, but remember too, that it is the fiscal responsibility of the council, you know, to, to act upon it in fair manner, but still keep in mind, people that utilize our other amenities, the community center, they're not all from within city limits. We count on those people. People that come and utilize their swimming pool, they come from around the area too. Okay? And the library, that travels throughout the counties. So, those are all things we spend money on. And I think there's, there's a somewhere in between here, is what I hope. And if not, and horse shows are, are not allowed in the arena anymore, that's a decision that ultimately this council will make. So, that's my guidance for the council to consider. One other thing, I do not anticipate allowing anyone to speak tonight. The large base of the folks here, I believe, are on one side, and I think there needs to be fair opportunity on both sides if I allow anybody to speak. That is my opinion, the council can act different if they want to, but it would be my, I guess, opinion that we should limit any, or not allow any public comment tonight. So, council members, it's in your hands. Who wants to start tonight? Marv?
Well, I guess, Mr. Mayor, that I don't disagree with what you say about it probably makes sense to send it back to committee. But being, there's been so much interest created, I feel a little bit disingenuous by doing that. I actually come here tonight to make a decision. I think I would like to make a positive decision and to keep going. I would say that, as you can imagine, having council members' names and phone numbers given immediately out following a K2M news story, based on our discussion tonight, it might pique some interest within our community, and it did. My phone rang constantly for the last two days. These are some takeaways from the information that I received if the decision was to stop putting the clay sand base on the concrete floor in the arena and discontinuing the horse and livestock availability to the building. Being we live in a rural farming community, it is thought by many that irreparable harm will be done to the Cotton County Fair and to the 4H programs within the county if the placement is stopped. A message that I received over and over and over again, moving those programs to Jackson County or Redwood County is not a viable option. Coming out of the past two years of COVID, it was felt that there hasn't been enough time given for the horse shows to rebuild to what they want, to what they once were, not unlike many of the businesses. In speaking with our local, one of our local veterinarians, he mentions that horse numbers are up, maybe as high as 33%, which should help in building those shows back. He also mentions we should consider the fact that while COVID may have slowed, we went right to $5 gas, which keeps those horse trailers from traveling. With gas prices coming down and horse numbers up, giving that process a little more time should work in our favor. I guess my thoughts on the issue now are, when the decision was made to install the concrete floor as the base for the sheet of ice for skating, we were kind of trading the labor to prepare the floor, roll the mats, and fix the leaks yearly for the labor cost to add to clay and sand base to the concrete. It's kind of a one-for-one, not to abandon livestock access to the building in a quick two years. One thing for sure, if it is to continue, there must be a great effort getting the word out as far as marketing the arena for livestock shows now that the word is out on a possible discontinuation. Several whom I talked to mentioned they were willing to help in spreading that word. So, I would suggest as tonight's action that we continue as we have in the past by adding the clay sand base to the concrete floor in the arena. That's my thoughts, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grunig. Jason?
I also agree with Mr. Grunig. I did come here prepared to make a decision, which I think is not ultimately a controversial decision in the community at all, but I do want to share a few thoughts along the way because I am very thankful for the many people who texted me, called me, emailed me, stopped me on the way. And I'm very thankful for that because, you know, they did put that extra effort, not just letting me know about all the people that are involved, but all the different aspects that I myself hadn't thought of before. So, I just want to share a few things based on my communications with these, these people. Community support is high. I got zero comments that went the other way, all of it was in one direction, and not all these people knew each other. In fact, most of them did not. These horse shows, I do know, do bring revenue indirectly through Wyndham. Obviously, the, the gas and the groceries and other things that people have mentioned, Jack Slade's and other places have mentioned that they notice an uptick in business when we do have these events that come into town, these horse shows and cattle shows and whatever it is that is coming through. The rise of horse shows and cattle showing is actually pretty pronounced, as I understand. And of course, Mr. Grunig said about the 33% growth in horse numbers. There is a perception that horse shows may not, may not be marketed at the level that they could or should be, and so that's something that was a concern too. The word hasn't gotten out sufficiently in the, in the wider community because, as I was instructed today with another phone call, a farrier talked to me about the fact that we are one of the few indoor facilities that can actually house something like this in all of Minnesota. And sure, there's some stuff in Iowa, just less than an hour from here, but we have a singularly unique opportunity to, to be a hub, if you will. If it were marketed at a level that is appropriate, if it were that the word got out, there's a lot of up-and-coming children who are learning about these things from 4H and, and just through ownership of horses and cattle. So, that's something else. People do spend personally a lot of money to keep animals. And as we well know, that keeping horses and cattle, it costs a lot, and they put a lot of effort into that. I've been up at the state fair for many, many years, worked in the barns, got to see all the efforts people put into their animals for showing, for doing these events. And it's a large effort. It really benefits the 4H students. We did have three years of weirdness, right? Of course, COVID was in there and the arena remodel and stuff. It just takes time. You don't rebound from things like that quickly. The amenity is important for the general character of Wyndham throughout. It's a good wholesome activity that's going on, and I would love to see it continue. Constituents have spoken. They just have. They have spoken loud and clear, as far as I'm concerned. Hundred percent pro, I have not heard anyone, I'm sure there's someone out there who's not a fan of that in the constituency. But we are a hub for lots of other things, not just horse shows, but of course, swimming and other events and sports and all that stuff. We are uniquely positioned to be a hub for many different things. And I'm very thankful that we are in that position. And a couple more things. We want to draw people from surrounding communities. We know that certain communities around here, though they're filled with wonderful people, they just don't have that ability to be a hub or a draw from surrounding communities, but we do. We have that unique thing. So, it's for the children, really, ultimately, it's for the community. It's for having another amenity, which is very important, a wholesome amenity. It's for the constituents who have spoken clearly. It's for the effort to put into advertising that if done properly, we will see a rebound of stuff coming back, but people need certainty. And to be quite frank, to reduce it to an outdoor venue really takes away flexibility and certainty that a lot of people, I mean, myself included, I would not want to put so much money into an event that I'm not sure if, whether it's going to be a problem for us. The momentum was lost somewhat, but we can gain ground. And one last thing, the future. You know, it's real easy to stop things. It's really hard to start them again. So, as for my voice, I am absolutely in favor of continuing the horse shows. I do know that there is a monetary cost, and that is the case for all the amenities we have around here, at all costs, whether it be swimming or weddings or, or parks, whatever it is, these are all for the people. And so, I would be in favor of, if the other council members agree, making even a decision tonight.
Thank you, Jason. You, and Marv, you both reminded me of a couple of other things that I wanted to add, and I would like Jenny maybe to comment on further. Because there, you know, it's not without concern that I have some of my opinions, and I, I would like, you know, just to address a couple of comments here, is I think we still have to be understanding that the concrete floor that houses the ice tubes and whatever that's all called, the freezing portion of it, has seen wear on them because of the removal of the hard-packed clay that was utilized. The sand was not maybe the issue, but when the clay was. But when the clay was put down, is that correct? That that's harder to take off and whatnot, and it's shown where? That is just one. On the other side, that I, I would have concerns that should be, you know, considered. So, um, and yeah, so, so far, good discussion. Jenny, you're on the Park and Rec Board who's been through this, and your comments, please.
Yes, I have been on the Park and Rec Board, and so I have heard discussion. We've had, you know, and it's, it's too bad that the rest of the council haven't been at all our meetings to, you know, fully grasp and understand everything that we've talked about, all the back and forth we've done, all the information that we've gathered, that we talked about in the meetings. Just, you know, so I don't know that you, you know, I kind of agree with the mayor, how you guys maybe don't have all that information to maybe make a real informed decision tonight. And at the meetings, I was back and forth on the fence. Like, we'd hear something, and I was one way, and then another thing, and I, I was always kind of back and forth. And then when you sit back and look at the overall picture of things, then it became more clear to me. And just a few things that I'd like to say regarding this all is even prior to COVID, when we were talking in Park and Rec, in 2019, we had the South Dakota Ponies of America said that their numbers were getting so low in the area that they weren't coming back. They weren't gonna have a show again. And that was prior to COVID. Their numbers were reducing. Then in January of 2020, prior to shutdown of COVID, the Independence Day shows had sent a letter, and that's out of Marshall. They had sent a letter to us saying that they would, they had made a decision not to have any more shows either, as they did not have the numbers to continue as well. So those are two people that pulled out because their numbers in their groups were declining. That's prior to COVID. Then when we have, when we look at numbers, the Palomino Show, that's in May and August. That's one of our biggest, you know, shows that comes in. So yes, in, in 2019 in May, they had ninety-two stalls they rented. And in August of nineteen, they had eighty-six stalls. So, you know, pretty good numbers in nineteen. Then COVID hit. We were shut down in 2020. They didn't have a May or August show. Came back in 2021 in May and had eighty-eight stalls. So this is right after COVID, right after things opened, May of 2021, they had eighty-eight stalls still. So still a pretty good number coming back after COVID. Well, by August of 2021, they were down to fifty-one stalls. Then they came up to fifty-eight in May of 2022, and then back down to fifty-two in August of 2022. So, you know, I'm looking at the declining numbers. Tim had come to many Park and Rec meetings, and he'd report on how horse show numbers were, what was going on with that. And he'd keep saying how the groups that he talked with, numbers were declining among that groups. And we're seeing that not just in horse shows. We're seeing that, you know, sports, anything that kids, you know, getting a job at different places in town. Like, people are just not putting themselves out there. There's decline in a lot of different activities. And it's, so it's not just related to horse shows. But I think there's some information. So we've been talking about this, you know, horse show and decline and people dropping out since 2019. It's not, this isn't a brand-new revelation that came about. We've been watching this. It wasn't until fall of 2021 when Park and Rec said, "Hey, maybe we need to look at discontinuing the indoor horse shows and just doing outdoor." And at that point in time, we said, "You know what? Let's invite all the user groups. Let's hear from them because we don't want to make a decision like that and recommend that to council without having those groups present." So those groups came, talked to us in the fall to the start of winter of 2021, expressed their desire to continue this, to have it promoted, to, you know, continue on. And we said, "Okay, we'll reevaluate it as we go along to see how this works." And honestly, I think there's one family that's present that can, you know, is a good continuous user. They have open riding every Tuesday night, and that family's there. I haven't really heard of a much other coming besides the one family. There might have been a second family there, here, or there, but it's one local family that is our user of it. And like I said, we've had declining numbers in other horse shows. Now, I think where people get confused and where a lot of people are, like, you know, maybe getting upset and whatever, is there's a difference between having indoor and outdoor horse shows and what's happening with the fair and being able to show your livestock at the fair. Because I think there's a lot of people out there that are saying, if they discontinue horse shows, no livestock is gonna be shown in the arena. Like, the arena is gonna be a cement floor, and the four, or the fair cannot use it, the 4H cannot use it. No, that's not what we're saying. If you go to Jackson County, their horse, all their horse-riding stuff is outside. Their indoor covered area has a cement slab to it, and they put down woodchips, wood shavings, what, they do not put down all the clay, all the sand, laser level it, pack it in, do everything that we've been doing in the arena. They do not do that. But they do put down some, you know, stuff on the floor, and they show their cattle. They show, you know, it's just, it can't be, it's not safe to ride animals on. So we can't have the riding portion of things indoors, but we still, during the fair time, can show animals in there, can do different events in there. It's just the riding portion would have to be utilized outside. When you look around, Lincoln, Lion, Redwood, Brown, Pipestone, Murray, Wattenwan, Blue Earth, Rock, Nobles, Jackson, Martin, Fairbolt, all have outdoor riding areas. Winona and Cannon Falls have indoor riding. They have, like, equestrian centers. They are promoting and geared towards, you know, horses. It's, it's a lot of money, yes, to invest in that and have horses and do that. And so most of the people that are really into horses go to these specialized centers that cater to that, that put money into that. And so I'm fine if we want to continue to have, put all that base and have everything in there so it's safe for horse shows. But if we do, we need to invest money in it. You can't, you can't think we're gonna get all these groups to come back here and more groups to join us doing what we're doing right now. Like, where they wash the horses outside is substandard compared to, you know, these better places where people are going to to do their horse shows. There hasn't been much of a change, other than what we put on the floor. That's it, you know, for horse shows. And so the groups that spend the money want to have things increased. So I'm not gonna vote to continue horse shows unless this council's willing to put money into improving things so that we can attract people to have horse shows. And so that's kind of my dilemma of it is, it'd be wonderful to, but we gotta put more money in it then, if that's what you really want to do. We can't market what we currently have when we already have people backing out pre-COVID. We have numbers dropping already. So, you know, we gotta, you know, I'm not sure which way the answer is on this. But I just want to make it clear because I feel so many people were like, "We can't have a fair. We can't show our animals." You know, we can still show animals. We can still do things in there. We can still put, you know, stuff on the cement to make it safe to walk your animals through, show your animals, judge your animals, have the auctions for the animals, those kind of things, but the riding. And the other thing Park and Rec has mentioned many a times. If we would stop the indoor stuff, money needs to be put into the outdoor to improve it. So the money that we put right now, you know, not saying to increase it, we're saying the money that's currently put towards what we do on the indoor, packing all that stuff in, all the labor, all the time, all the materials, that money should then be designated to the outdoor arena for, say, the next three years or whatever, so that that money goes right to there, and we specify it so all the horse people know that is where the money's going, and we are committed to improving that outdoor. That means putting up some kind of building to have announcers and judges, improving the speaker system out there, putting up stands for fans and things to watch. And if money can be found or come up with that some kind of covering, some kind of roof structure, you know, not a full closed-in building, but something like that could happen out there. If there's funds available somewhere, then let's look at doing that. You know, I think those are all viable options, and so it doesn't end horse things. It just changes how it looks. And the, the thing about what you guys are hearing from people, you're only hearing one side because the other side doesn't know that they need to come out and say something. They didn't know, you know, we've been told that there's other uses that the indoor arena could be used for, but because horse shows, you know, like, nobody's approached us and, you know, like, "Okay, I will, I would do this." Because of the wood and sand and the sand and clay that's down there, they haven't thought that they could use it for that. But there are a lot of other things that we could do in that indoor space that could bring profit to the city. It would bring people into our community that would go to the, you know, gas station, go out to eat, those kind of, all the things that you're the horse people. And honestly, the horse people that come, most of them stay with their horses at the arena. They're not staying at the hotel. If we brought indoor flea markets for a whole weekend where people come and have set up their flea markets like they do down at, you know, in Iowa, at Vic's Corner. If we had an indoor space so they can set up their stuff, they know it never rains on it, they know they can do it a couple days in a row because we can lock it, keep it safe in between times, then they'd stay locally. You know, raise money, have people coming to town from around the area. I mean, there's just, like, a lot of different things to think about that I think a lot of people are just looking at one narrow focus, and you need to look at all the possibilities that are out there. Let's see, something else. I'll think of it later, I'm sure. But that's, you know, I, oh, I know what it was. The other thing that I want to make sure that I say that I get out there now, so people listening definitely hear this. You know, in our Park and Rec, our minutes are in the council packet. So every month, they're in our council packet. So when you look at that council packet, you'll see the minutes from the Park and Rec. So you'll see what's going on in the Park and Rec meeting. If you follow that and look at that, because I don't want this to be a surprise, you know, like, I think a lot of people said this, the arena issue and the indoor riding seemed like a surprise, like they had never heard about it till just now. And so I don't want any other surprises coming, so I'm gonna say this tonight so people hear it. Castle Kingdom is deteriorating. It is rotting from the inside out. It is getting to be unsafe. And I really don't think there's much time left in Castle Kingdom. So if people want to start focusing and thinking about Castle Kingdom, I don't want it to come that it's gonna come before the board, that it's time to tear it down and figure out what to do, and everybody be in an uproar that they never heard that Castle Kingdom was deteriorating. I want to make that known now that it is, and we have been talking about it on Park and Rec. The pool is the other thing. I have said it many a times here at council too, but we've talked about it at Park and Rec. It's getting to its last leg. We do need to figure out what to do there. And one of these days, that's gonna be on this council agenda too. Do we try to update the pool? Do we do a new pool? Or do we just not have a pool in this community? So I don't want that, when it comes on the agenda, to be a last minute. So that's what Park and Rec, we're looking at. We have limited amount of funds. Where do we put these funds? What are the priorities of the taxpayers in the city of Wyndham? What would they want to see us put our money to? Do they want Castle Kingdom leveled and nothing put there? Do they want the pool closed and nothing re-put there? Do they want the horse shows to continue? What do the taxpayers of the city of Wyndham want to do?
Thank you, Jenny. Another great viewpoint, I think. You know, and, and as Jenny said, she has been on the Park and Rec, so thank you for those comments. One thing that I want to, and I'm gonna give you a chance here soon, Jim. I just wanted to reiterate, you know, and this is from November tenth, twenty-twenty-one, in the minutes, okay, of the city council, when they talked about horse show decision. And in the, the last sentence reads, "A decision was made to have the Fair Board and 4H attend the December meeting to discuss making a recommendation to city council." Okay? In December, under public comment, 4H and Fair Board. The final two sentences here. "Overall, the decision was made to continue to keep horse shows for another two to three years and see what the numbers look like, and also, over the next few years, to go out and promote and try to build our shows." Okay? That was one year ago. And at that time, the decision was made, apparently, by the Park and Rec to wait for two to three years. So with that, and I just, I, I bring that up because I, I, I do think it's important. But the important part that's missing from this discussion is, I don't know that we can do that all ourself or Tim can do it all himself. I think it would take the 4H, the Fair Board, the, the horse people that are out within our whole larger community to help us do that, to get the numbers back. You know, along with some of the things that Jenny said. It's, it's, it's the cost is part of it. I, I do believe also that I would like to have a discussion at some time if, if the numbers aren't up, that it's looked at again, and I, I would like to actually see it or have the discussion if an outdoor facility that is roofed, I, I think that is mandatory. I've heard over and over, you can't, cannot do it outdoors. You gotta have it available if it rains. So if, if it was a nice facility outdoors undercover, is, would that be agreeable? You know, I, I don't know. I would like to hear that from the 4H, the Fairground Committee, you know, and, and the, the horse show user groups. I, I would just, I would be so, I, I just wonder if that would be a workable thing. Because as Jenny said too, there are other items that could be done within the arena. But once again, I read the minutes. I wanted to share that. I had Steve look that up because I was pressing him that the council has not heard some of these comments, okay, or been involved in it. Well, then I have failed to read the minutes, is what that proved, thanks to you. So, Jim, please.
Well, my bottom line is money. Wife says to me today, "I need a haircut." I says, "Have you checked the banking?" I guess I feel the same way about anything. It's gotta be paid for. My obligation is to the taxpayer. But a couple of the taxpayers said to me also, "What about the hockey? Is that losing money or is that making money? Is that paying for itself to pay for the refrigeration? I doubt it. I don't know." But that was a question made to me twice. My bottom line is, like I say, is, is keep it however you want it, as long as it can be paid for. That is my, my big point. I guess that's about all I really have. I think the horseshoes are good. People, my wife used to manage Dairy Queen here, and they always had to put on extra help whenever the horse shows were in town. And so I, I know that they, they may not, they probably stay in their trailers, down with their horses. They take care of it, be safe for their horses, whatever, understand that. But they still eat. They still might have Papa Top or two, you know, so John might like to see them. So, you know, so many things, you know. But there again, the bottom line is the money, money part of it. I, if, if we want to go into the expense, I'd rather, I'd rather go into the expense of doing that arena than I would even talk about a swimming pool because I know what that's gonna cost, especially when we got a lake. But that, that's, I guess that's where I'm at. I, I just, you know, the money end of it.
Jason, can you hold your thought here? I think the council members have all had a chance to talk one time anyway. Tim, did you want to come up and give any input that you'd like to share tonight? Just wanted to make sure we didn't. I, I guess, why don't you come up? I got a couple of specific questions here that I'd like to ask. And that, Tim, would regard the outreach, different things that you've done to try to promote, promote the horse shows, I guess, up to this point?
Yeah, so with those minutes that were, were in there from last year, talking about going and promoting, the first thing I said I would do is go up to the Minnesota Horse Expo, which I did. talking about going and promoting, the first thing I said I would do is go up to the Minnesota Horse Expo, which I did, just to see what was all up there as far as, you know, different facilities and venues advertising for horse shows. So I walked around through all the buildings just to see, okay, what do they have? What do they prepare? What do they show? I was told in the past, when Wyndham went up there to represent it, we just had a little board with some printed pictures on paper that kind of expressed our, our shows, which I didn't want to go up and do that. I wanted it to look good. So that was my intent to go up the first year, was to see what this all looked like. So I went up there. I didn't see venues like Cannon Falls or Winona there, and, and maybe I missed them, but I just didn't see them. I didn't really see any other facilities advertising horses. What I basically saw was, you know, retail stuff, people selling things, booth giving information. There was a lot of, you know, training, different things that, that different businesses or, or things offer, but I didn't really see anything from community side. Now, this doesn't mean that I, I came back and said, nope, I'm not going to go put a booth up there or anything. It was just the first time I'd ever been to this expo and wanted to learn from that. So with that being said then, when the user groups came back for the next horse show season, what I did was network through those groups to say, you know, and, and they agreed, we're going to help you get the word out. We're going to network with this group. When Minnesota Prairie Saddle Club came, we had a discussion at the end of their show. They were going to try to work with South Central. And, and most of these groups do do their shows outside, you know, and they, they loved coming to Wyndham. They gave us nothing but compliments when they came. After they left, I think everybody saw an email that came through from that group. And, and they were going to work with South Central. In those discussions, they, they also did say that it is hard when you have, you know, a show at one venue to create another show. Sometimes it's a scheduling issue. So it's hard to do that. And then some shows don't want to leave a venue because then what's good for, for a, a newer facility that gets that business, it also pulls a show away from another venue. So there was a lot of discussion about that, but through all the groups that did come through the arena, you know, we're going to network within the horse community. Other than that, that was, that was the only thing that was done last year after that meeting, was just internal networking, you know, on that side of it. So yeah, I did not go out and, you know, set up a booth anywhere or, you know, anything other than network through the groups that we had and working with those that came through that were going to also reach out to other, and they did reach out to other groups as well.
Okay, and do we have any book for this year, or for 2023?
Nothing booked, but I do have contacts based on what decision or what route.
And how many, how many of them are there?
Right now, well, after the Minnesota Palomino Group left, I don't think we're going to get them, them back. But I do have Minnesota Prairie Saddle Club already waiting for a date or, or decision on it. Did talk to, and it's not a guarantee, but we had a discussion. If we do continue with it, they would want to come, and that's a cutting show. And then Bureau of Land Management, that does the Wild Horse Sale, they would also like to come back and sell horses. So that would be three, just without, you know, reaching out to, but there are other groups that are interested.
And I think, and, and I think that's where the folks that are making comments could help us. Wouldn't you agree? I mean, that we need the user groups to also help in facilitating. Who, who, they need to talk to Tim, right? They need to talk to you to set up these.
Sure, yep.
Okay, these other, the user groups need to talk to Tim to arrange these. If we're going to attempt to, you know, keep this viable. So.
Yeah, and I guess the only other thing, there, there was, you know, through social media and different things that came through, you know, several comments about, you know, people can never reach me. I don't return phone calls back that I'm, I'm, you know, trying to, to push horse shows out the door, which is furthest from the truth. I've, I've never once told anybody we're not going to have horse shows in Wyndham. I've never once said that. All the groups that have worked there have said I'm very pleasant to work with, extremely nice, which, which I would agree with. I've never had a bad conversation with any of the groups that come down there. You know, and, and I will continue. So I'm not, you know, personally looking to push horse shows out of Wyndham or just outside of the arena. The people I call back, and I'm human, if somebody called me and I didn't return their phone call because I got busy with something, running around, it was never intentional and it was not to ever not book a show. You know, that, that's the furthest from the truth. So, you know, that being said, because there was one person that said I called them and, and I didn't, I told them we're not having shows. And so what I do, I called that person that next day and I said, "In our conversation, did I ever say to you that we were not going to have shows?" And he said, "Absolutely not." He said, "After the council makes the decision, we'll reconnect and go from there." You know, so it's false information that gets either twisted or stretched that throws somebody under the bus that that's not even true, which, you know, isn't very fair, you know, to.
No.
But, you know, and that's just my, my thought on it, but if, if we decide to continue horse shows, all for it, then, then that's what we do. It's just as a Park and Rec Commission, we were to review the financials and look at options. There was never a personal or anybody's agenda to, to chase them out the door. And I think that's what people also think as well, you know.
Was there ever any discussion on, I guess, my comment on an outdoor or arena update or anything with a roof on it?
We've had, we've had that in the CIP funding, but it's never gotten any attention as to funding something like that.
And do you remember that dollar amount? Because I do not.
I believe it was set at like $200,000, is in that CIP.
That, that's correct. And it was a number that Al had put in as a placeholder several, a number of years ago.
Yeah, it was before me. Yeah, yeah. And, and with that, when I talk to these user groups, you know, they, they, they like coming to Wyndham because of the cost. You know, when they have, you know, but they said it's hard for them, when they can only get, you know, the numbers that they do, but they have to pay to fly in the judges. They have to pay to put the judges in a hotel. You know, some of the, some of the times, it's hard for them to break even on a show, let alone put money in the bank so that they can, you know, improve things. They also, you know, some of these facilities, not only do they want the indoor riding, but the outdoor warming air, warm-up area, they want that covered because you can't warm up in an outside arena when it's raining and then decide you're going to come inside to do the show. I mean, so again, I think we could get some shows in a percentage. They're not going to be big like they haven't been in the past, but I think we can get shows. But it, like Jenny said, it's going to come with a cost of updating and, and still putting updates to that facility. You know, there, there's been nothing done since the seventies and eighties realistically on those fairgrounds to improve horse shows. And so they, their numbers have gone to facilities that do cater to that, correct? And so if we want to do this, you know, I think we, we also have to make a decision that we're going to invest some dollars in attracting those groups to a facility that people want to see. You know, is, is also going to be included with that.
Thank you, Tim. Jenny, did you?
Real quick, I didn't mention, and while you're here, correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I had from Park and Rec notes is like the number of horse show. Just so you guys know what the number of horse shows is that we have. 2019, we had six events. 2020, of course, COVID's and no events. 2021, three events. And 2022, five events. So that's what we had, according to me, looking at what was reported at our Park and Rec meetings. That's how many events. So, you know, if you're looking at, you know, look at 2019 prior to COVID, six events throughout the whole spring, summer, fall. Okay? And then 2022, now a little bit past COVID, we had five events. So that's why I'm on the fence when we're looking at financially putting all this money. And then the other thing I didn't say is, we take our street workers, our park and our street workers go to the arena to do all this work. So they're not, people are complaining about potholes being filled and things happening with the street. Well, I'm sorry for, you know, 10 or so days in the spring and 10 or so days in the fall. All our Park and Rec and street people have to be down at the arena, getting all this stuff on, getting all this stuff out, have to do all that work. That can't be done by volunteers. That has to be done by city employees. And that's in the contract to be done that way as well. So just event-wise numbers, you're looking at five events in 2022. When I think of what other things could be in there and could we get more than five events in there? That's, I'm just looking at money and dollars. I'm not trying to put on what's more important than the other or anything like that. I'm just purely looking at numbers.
Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Minnesota Prairie Saddle Club Association, we probably all received an email from them, but they did say that they would be very interested in future events. They are very much in support of keeping the horse shows. And that, of course, is pretty well-known. Minnesota Cutting Association, they did have perhaps not misunderstanding about, about events and our hosting of events and stuff like that. And they represent, in my mind, a group of, several groups of people who maybe need to hear in, in clearer tones or clear communication that if we go forward and continue horse shows, that we are definitely open for business. And, and in a theory that I spoke with, mentioned that there's certain types of events and activities that have to be planned way in advance. And we're talking like nine months to a year for some of the bigger shows. And so when they're planning a year out, they have to have certainty. And we can never afford to have events for a horse show in an unsecured location in process. We could never, like, remove it from the arena and then in the next few years, we'll get to have a shelter. Something like that, I don't think is viable at all. The Minnesota Palomino Association mentioned that they, they had an impression of maybe not being as welcomed as, as they expected they might be. And of course, the poor attendance, they noted was to do with footing issues in the past. And those things are important to these groups. I do think that there's enough interest to have far more than three or five or six events. I think that the marketing is going to have to be a lot more robust. And of course, like the mayor said, we need other groups to maybe in tandem go directly after different groups to see these events grow. There is a lot of growth that can be had through horse shows. It's not just having the events. It's the impact on children. I mean, I know some children personally, some who are here today. I have watched as these things have unfurled in their lives. And it's such a positive, healthy thing that we know is already here. And I would very much not want to see it go away. Now, one, one or two more quick thoughts. There are precious few communities around here who have a type of facility like we do that can actually have the opportunity to, to host these horse shows and cattle shows and stuff. They're not, they're, they're, the number's getting smaller, not bigger. And it doesn't mean that it's going the way of the dodo bird. Quite the contrary. We, with appropriate effort, can absolutely do this. It is something that is doable, and if it's done right, it will continue to grow. And I think it's good for our communities.
Just a couple of quick questions. When you say something is an event, how many days are you talking? Is that a weekend?
It, it depends on what the show is. The Palomino Show is usually a three-day show. They'll show Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Sure.
Other groups, it could just be a two-day show, a, a Saturday, Sunday event. So it just depends on the, the, either the saddle club or the group as to what it is, you know, and, and how they do it. We have different price structure for those, you know, if they have so many stalls, they get, you know, this price. If they're under so many stalls, it's, you know, they get charged a building rent plus a stall fee. If they don't use any stalls, then it's just a biz, building rent fee. So it just depends on what the group is and who's using it. The, the bigger breed shows are typically a three-day event. The open shows, which would be similar to your Minnesota Prairie Saddle Club, South Central Saddle Clubs, those are typically a two-day event, like a weekend event, yes.
So if you had a good summer, you had nine events, that's probably a pretty full summer.
It is a full summer. It just depends on how many, you know, if we judge it on stalls, it just depends on how many stalls. I mean, we could have nine events. And if we're only doing 40 to 50 stalls, it's, it is less revenue. If we do nine events and we have 100 stalls, then that's good money. Absolutely.
Does, does the fair and the 4H generate stall rentals at all?
The 4H, the 4H will for the clinic that they hold in the summer. Other than that, when the fair is there, the Fair Board would collect any, any funding or revenue from that. Yep. Because they, they, they occupy and operate the, the arena and the grounds solely for them for those days. But the 4H group, when they have their clinic, would include stall rental for that group and some revenue on that side, yes. Yep.
Okay, I'm going to just ask for final comments. Okay, everybody's had a fair chance to ask their question, make their comments. I appreciate that. Does, here comes my question. The council wish to take action on this?
I myself would definitely be open to entertain a motion to continue the horse shows as per the notes for the next couple of years before any decision
I know it.
further might be made.
My question to you, Jason, was that a motion rather than?
That was a motion to continue the horse shows.
And for what period of time?
For the next two years.
Okay, for the next two years?
Yes, sir.
And reevaluate or is there?
At that time, the council at that time would have that decision-making power.
And so a future council better be watching this in about a year to make that decision. Is the council going to, yeah, that's a good question. Steve raised a good question. Is that the Park and Rec they're going to do that, or is it the city council? Are we going to take this on now? Jenny, you're bound to Park and Rec. Do you have any comments to, before I take that motion?
Well, I do like, I mean, I just, you know, tonight heard the idea of having our January 11th Park and Rec meeting, having that open so that we can take public comment at that meeting, put that on our agenda, and hear what thoughts are. Talk about that again and see what Park and Rec, what their overall thoughts are, you know. Because I think they were kind of wishy-washy and didn't make a decision. They just passed it along to city council to make that decision. And I still, again, say like I did earlier tonight, I feel like I was at all those meetings, so I heard all that information. I don't feel like everyone else here was at all those meetings to know all the numbers, to know all the information, to really make an informed decision. Yes, you're hearing what you heard, you know, on people that got riled up just recently in the last couple of days and reached out to you. But that didn't give all the other people that have other ideas out there an opportunity to reach out to you as well, to say, here are some other ideas, here are some other thoughts that we have as well. And so, you know, to be fair, I mean, I was one that wanted a decision made right away because, like you were saying, it's a long time out. People need to know and plan. So I did not want to kick this further down the road. And here we are, spring, trying to make a decision. And then nothing is rented out on either side because we didn't make a decision in time. So yes, a decision needs to be made quick, but I feel like January 11th, talk and then come back here and make a decision.
I have to apologize to Mr. Sherman. He was attempting to make a motion and I entertained additional discussion and I actually asked a question. I'm sorry. Mr. Sherman, do you intend to make your motion as, could you please restate it and I will accept that motion?
I would like to make a motion to continue the horse shows for the next two years indoor, at the arena.
And to put it on the floor, I am going to second it. Basically, for the exact reason that Jenny that Jenny has given us, is that all these towns around here have open arenas or open areas for that, and Wyndham has indoor, which puts Wyndham a cut above everybody else. So I second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Steve, would you repeat the motion for everyone, please, and then I'll take questions or comments?
Motion to continue indoor horse shows at the arena through the 23 and 24 season.
Questions or additional comments, discussion from council? Marv, your speakers on. Jim, you turned yours on. Would you like to comment?
I would like to also have a public meeting with the taxpayers so that they can be part of this too, because I think it's very important to them, not only because they pay the bills, but probably just to be even kept in the loop, because a lot of the things you see on Facebook and so forth, that's why I don't go on there, because it's, if I wanted, I'd go to the library if I wanted to read that stuff. So, and I don't have to go, otherwise I know there are a lot of books, too. But anyway, no, I if I would, I would go along with that at least two years, providing we have a public hearing about the same time as what the Park and Rec, so forth, whatever, so that that is, so that we can make a decision.
Well, I cannot ask for an amendment to the motion, and I'm not going to, because that would actually not be warranted. The motion has been made and duly seconded. That is what we're gonna act on, Jim. I cannot add a condition on there that we're gonna have a public comment on it. I don't believe Steve says, okay. Steve, by, yeah, go ahead. You cite it, Steve.
So what I would suggest, since you're talking about having input and having, you know, go through the Park and Rec Commission, which were initially, and then having council involved to be able to hear that discussion, maybe you have a joint Park Rec Council meeting. That way, it can be officially noticed. Everybody can participate, and that way you can get it done in one fell swoop versus doing them, then do here, then do them, and back and forth. That's just a
The problem is that we have a motion and a second on the table to this, unless they would amend it.
But you can still have, call a public joint meeting with three-day notice. So you could still do it January 11th, you could do it in 2024, you could do it at some future point in time. So I don't think
Once the decision's already been made, your, the joint meeting, it depends on this motion.
Correct.
If this motion
If it, if
Passed, you're gonna continue that with that motion. If you want to have a joint meeting to take input in this, then you're gonna defeat that motion and then have a decision later.
Well, it doesn't to me.
Okay.
Okay, because I know where this is going. So, thank you, council. Jenny?
Okay, my discussion comment would just be, like James, you know, I would not be for this motion right now, because if I deny this motion right now that the two made, then if that gets denied, then I would look at moving forward with January 11th, having that Park and Rec meeting, getting more input, you know, and then at that meeting, besides the horse 4-H and fair board people, regular people from the public that have comments or have thoughts on use of the indoor arena can come forward at that event. We're not saying it's just horse people that can come to our Park and Rec meeting. It's open to anybody. Anybody can come to a Park and Rec meeting, and we can take comments, and, you know, depending on how many people are there, that's probably how we'd have to go with how much we limit timeframe on people talking at that meeting, obviously. And if we think it's going to be a bigger meeting, normally our Park and Rec meetings are here at 5:30 on Wednesday, January 11th. If we'd have to move that, and I don't even know if the community center's available to have it at a bigger location, but we'll just have to put in more chairs. But that would be my intention, is I would deny this motion and then look towards January, having that meeting, and hopefully something being resolved there, and then it coming back yet at our second meeting in January, council meeting to be talked about again.
Another comment. Also, that does push it off a month or more, which does collapse the timeframe for not just those who do horse shows or cattle shows, but for anyone who is looking for some certainty to plan for next summer. I'm already planning next summer events myself, and I understand that lots of families are in the same position.
Thank you for that comment. Tim, would you, I'm gonna ask you a question here is, do you feel that three weeks from now is gonna make a difference in that decision of the horse shows?
I think, I think right now, there are so many user groups that are waiting to know whether we're gonna have indoor or outdoor facility. And I think that in large part may be a reason why the Palominos also left is because of the uncertainty of knowing, okay, is it gonna be just this year? Is it gonna be in two years? You know, when when is it gonna end, or is it not gonna end? And for the benefit of their group, they felt it's maybe in their best interest to find a facility that's gonna be a certainty to to host a show. So the groups that I have talked with now, I think, you know, I I think they could wait it out a month, you know, but I think there could be other shows that are gonna start booking guaranteed locations without having to wait, you know, for that. And there could be other shows that have a little bit more flexibility. It just depends on the show. Breed shows are planned out a lot further than open shows. So I think it depends on the type of show that would adjust that window, you know. Certain, certain groups cannot wait that long. Other groups probably have the flexibility to do so.
Okay, direct question. Do you feel the decision should be made tonight?
I would probably see if anybody wants to to put in some input. That may be beneficial. But again, if if the council wants to vote, the council wants to vote, I guess. I Yep.
Yeah, the council's gonna vote. The motion's been made and seconded.
And like I said, or what you said when we first started the meeting, that you think it would be good for people to be able to have an opportunity to express or do that. And so if that's, that's what it is, I don't think waiting a month is gonna make or break the the next year's season.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve this. As stated, once again, Steve, please read the man, or the motion?
Motion to continue indoor horse shows for the 23-24 seasons.
Okay. We're gonna call for the vote. I'm gonna do it by roll call. Steve?
Sorry. Quaid?
No.
Farag? Grunig?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Nelson?
No.
Mayor?
No. I stated at the beginning of the meeting that I wanted some further discussion with the user groups. I'm gonna stand by that, what I talked about. And so I do believe, I do want to hear from the user groups and hear that comment. I also want to hear from other folks if they have a different opinion on this. And I will be doing some research in the interim to do that if the next motion carries, if we have one.
So just to state it again, then, we're looking at, for everybody that's listening, our Park and Rec next meeting is Wednesday, January 11th at 5:30, right here in the city council chambers. So people that are interested, so they're hearing this, if you have interest in making any kind of comments, one way or another, on how the indoor arena is used, what is put down on the on the cement stab slab, what kind of purposes we would have for using that indoor space, whether it's horses or something else, I think all different comments from all different people that are interested in making a comment on that should attend that Wednesday, January 11th meeting, so that we are hearing all sides.
Okay, Jenny, I, I think it may be advantageous that we have actually a joint meeting, city council and the Park and Rec. If we do it as a joint meeting, then we can make that decision after that meeting. It could be made on January 11th. Yep. Helps expedite that answer, then we get it done. Okay? So, and I would like to, in that, because it would be a joint meeting, I think that the council could, I guess, decide on how to arrange, moderate that meeting. I think it's important that we have as many of the Park and Rec commissioners there, so we get their input as well, and maybe some concurrence on this. I do think that the user groups should be prepared to have a speaker, maybe or two, but not to get too carried away, you know, somebody representing the individual speaker or the user groups that would like to talk, you know, and set some kind of guidelines, you know, so they know what to expect. And we invite anybody that's for or against this, this would be an open public meeting. So
So, Mr. Mayor, would you like, then, try and make a motion, then, to have a special meeting, our joint meeting, joint meeting with Park and Rec and the city council for Wednesday, January 11th at 5:30?
And Steve, would that be the fair, fair characterization of that motion?
Yeah, I believe that that's correct. Yep. Set a special council meeting to be a joint meeting with Park and Rec Commission on January 11th at 5:30.
Jenny's made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
That second is by James. Any further discussion? I'll ask for a roll call.
Grunig?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Farag? Quaid?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
That carries without my vote.
Four oh.
Which would have been
Four, four zero.
Thank you. Okay.
Just a, a quick question on my end.
Okay.
With that, is that considered our Park and Rec Commission meeting?
Yes.
And just set the agenda accordingly, or would we have an abnormal meeting after?
Could you, could you just put this first on the agenda?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Absolutely. We always, we always do that for, for groups. We always have them first on the agenda. I just didn't know if it, since it was a joint meeting, if it's a sep, okay.
It'll be your meeting.
Clarified, got it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, council, for a lot of good discussion questions today. And all the user groups that are here, thank you very much. I anticipate that we'll see at least some of you in the near future. Okay, Mike, I'm not supposed to take questions from the public, but if you had a comment, you could make it to me because we're gonna recess for five minutes. We're gonna be back here by eight o'clock on that back one. Okay. So, okay, I will take your question out there, Mike. I'm not gonna have public comment here. I said I wouldn't, so I'll stay with that, but I will be back there. We're recessed for five minutes. Jim? Paging, oh, there's Jim. Oh, yeah. We're still missing him, but we're ready to roll.
Did you restart it? Okay, you were back on.
Okay, we're back, and we are re-adjourned at 8:05. I'm sorry I was a few minutes late. Re-convened. Re, what did I say?
Adjourned.
Adjourned? Well, sometimes we'd like to be. Okay. Well, department heads, I guess we're past that. So we're all the way to number four, 2023 City Budget and Smart Goals. And Steve, you have a lot of information. Do you want to go over that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We had the budget presentation at the last city council meeting and had a preliminary levy number. That is in the resolution for this evening. A copy of the budget was sent to you as a link. So essentially, with the approval of the resolution approving the proposed tax levy, that will then be voted for approval or not. And pending that outcome, we will then have your vote on the budget as it was presented. And then from there, we'll go to the dashboard report and the 2023 Smart Goals. So if we can take the first resolution and proceed.
Okay, Steve, my question was for the 2022 budget amendments. Could you just?
We'll get to the, the, after the 2023 budget. These are adjustments within the existing
Existing?
Existing year budget. Those are not changes. Correct.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay, council, any questions for Steve? We have a resolution included. No changes made to the budget as of last meeting, so I would assume that everything's in order, Steve, on this resolution.
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion or an introduction for this resolution?
I would introduce the resolution.
Second. This resolution approving the 2022 tax levy collectible in 2023 was introduced by Marv and seconded by James. Any discussion? Roll call.
Sherman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Quaid?
Yes.
Farag? Grunig?
And that carries.
Okay, the next action here is approval of the budget itself that was sent out in that link and reviewed at the last meeting.
Is there a motion, this is just a motion to approve the 2023 budget of the city Wyndham?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, James. Second, Jason. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by say and aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Very good. Dashboard, dashboard report.
Thank you, council and mayor. The 2022 dashboard report, as these were the smart goals from last year, this is just a one-pager that kind of shows you what those smart goals were. They're highlighted on the left there, and then there's the table that kind of tells you whether they're completed, about complete, 50%, 25% or eliminated, and then any of the comments along the side, just to kind of let you know the status of these things. Some of them have been carried, have been carried over into 2023, but you can get a pretty good flavor of where these goals were for 2022 and what's been accomplished and what is still in process. So this is for your information on those 2022 goals. This does not need action, but it's just a presentation, and if you had questions, I can attempt to answer them as best I can.
Quite an active report. Council, have any questions for Steve? Okay, that'll be
Thank you. The next piece is the 2023 Smart Goals. These were the goals that had been discussed with boards and commissions, were applicable, and with the department heads and myself. There's a couple in here that I had submitted. First one, probably no big surprise to you, stable property taxes. We've, we've talked about that. It's been a council goal and something we keep an eye on always. And so then we also have our team-building exercise. I'm not gonna go through all of them, but we have airport projects and smart goals. I'm not going to go through all of them, but we have airport projects and smart goals from every department included in here. Those were for year review and questions, if any. We would ask that we have a council motion to approve those smart goals as they are shown. We will then track those throughout the year and provide you with a dashboard report on those at the end of next year, when we get that far.
Thank you, Steve. You know, through the process in our different committees, I know the, that the department heads have led us through the smart goals with most of it. So, I think at least within the departments, we have an idea, but this really is the comprehensive look at all the departments of the whole city. So, I think very important. So, any questions from the council? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the 2023 Smart Goals Planning Forms as submitted?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, Jenny, seconded by Jason. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And Steve is now going to...
Cheryl.
Oh, Cheryl's here. Good.
Yes. Cheryl's going to walk you through the 2022 budget adjustments, and these are for our current year activities. Those are included here back in for your appraisal.
And are these, and of course, there'll be unaudited adjustments, right? I mean, they haven't been looked at by... okay, anything. So, okay, Cheryl?
Did you want me to review each of these, or did you just want to ask questions?
Why don't you just tick through them all?
Okay. Okay. The first one is the Lion Shelters donations. We didn't know how much was going to be coming in or how much we were going to pay on that shelter. So, we have good numbers now. So, there's a budget adjustment for those donations in and payments. The second one is Building and Zoning Health and Viva contributions. We had an employee that started health insurance in February due to a situation that a spouse changed jobs and no longer had health insurance. So, those adjustments for both Viva and health insurance are in there. The third one is a transfer to close the Fourth Avenue Improvement. We had a bond that is completely done. It's paid, but we have a negative cash balance that we needed to transfer reserves from the general fund to close out that bond fund. The fourth one is the retirement at the library, a sick payout. We do reserve money for that, but we did not budget for that. So, that, but that adjustment is now being budgeted for as an adjustment. The next one, the airport fuel sales and purchases. We not only had a large volume change due to crop spraying and then also a price change there. So, we have an adjustment for that, both purchases and sales. The next one, our small cities grant and reimbursement program. We didn't know what that amount would be, so we made an adjustment for that now. The next one, we had talked at budget workshop regarding the excess on the arena roof and those funds that we would like to utilize in another capital project area. So, that adjustment is being made for $40,000. So, the next one is to reclass. We were notified of an audit that we're going to have this year on our ambulance, and they wanted us to pull out the medications separate so that they could review that easier. So, we added an account for that, and we didn't budget for that because we had it in another account. So...
So, yeah, so essentially, it was that medication was like under supply.
Yes.
And now medication is pulled out as a separate line item within the budget.
A separate line item. So, we split that out.
But the dollar, the dollar amounts aren't necessarily changing. It's just the classification that's changing.
Correct. Mm-hmm. The next item, because we have a full-time ambulance director, we had benefits that go with that. So, we had health insurance and Viva benefits and made that adjustment. The next one, we, this is just a classification adjustment because of when we refinance the bond or the debt payment to a bond, it changes the account. So, it's just an in and an out for both interest and principal to a different account number. The next adjustment is related to a TIF spending plan that was set this year. We didn't have that information when we did budgeting. The next one is an overestimate of TIF 1-21. So, we reduced the amount for the TIF. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Okay, pretty routine or the way it looks. So, I appreciate your comments. Very good.
Is there a motion to approve the adjustments?
I'd make the motion to approve the 2022 budget amendments.
I'll second.
Motion by Marv, seconded by Jenny to approve the 2022 budget adjustments. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Very good. You could have requested to go right away, too, if you wanted, but...
[laughing]
Okay. We have, I believe, three resolutions of accepting donations. First one's to the library. This one's for over $1,000 as I read it. $1,232.
$47.
So, very much appreciated. Someone care to introduce that resolution?
I'd introduce the resolution accepting a donation from the friends of the library.
And I went second.
And recognition, this is for iPads. Kind of a new twist on it. And so, with that, any discussion? You got that? Ready to roll? And roll call.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Farreg. Quaid.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have the donation for the police department, Wyndham Towing. And I believe that this is again a substantial one from Wyndham Towing LLC for the Wyndham Police Department. Was there a specific use for that at all? I didn't catch that.
For the drone.
Oh, for the drone?
It's for the drone, and the amount is $1,173.
Okay, very much appreciated. And someone care to introduce that?
I'll introduce the resolution accepting a donation from Wyndham Towing.
I'll second.
Introduced by Jason, seconded by Jenny. Any discussion? Roll call. Question?
I had somebody out, and I'm sure they know much more about the law than I do, asked me, could this possibly ever be construed as conflict of interest because of, if we have a snow emergency and he calls somebody to come and get a car, who do we call? You know, that's, that was the question given to me. I don't see how it can possibly be because it has to be done, but...
Is that because the police calls Wyndham Towing? Is that the connection?
Yes. That's, that is what they said.
Okay, so that's the question?
I guess I don't... I don't know why it would be, but...
It's not for the activity of the council to accept it. It's not the PD that would accept it.
Yeah, the councils, that's a good point, Steve. Council's accepting it, not the PD. We're accepting it for Wyndham Towing to the city of Wyndham. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Good question. Thank you. Roll call.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Farreg.
And that carries. One other one to the arena, Wyndham Figure Skating Club. So, this is for $1,500 from the Wyndham Figure Skating Club for the Wyndham Arena.
I would like to introduce the resolution authorizing to accept a donation from the Wyndham Figure Skating Club to the Wyndham Arena to purchase figure skates.
I would second.
Introduced by Jenny, seconded by Marv. Any discussion? Once again, very much appreciated. Roll call.
Farreg. Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
And that carries. Thank you. TIF District 1-22, Interfund Loan Resolution. Steve, just a quick explanation, please.
Sure, very quickly. As you remember, or may remember, when we were doing the TIF 1-21 and doing that purchase of property, we adopted the TIF spending plan. We need a amendment approving the interfund loan portion of that, of that TIF spending plan as recommended by Lers and Associates. So, we have a resolution essentially approving that interfund loan for $575,000, which is that future, that's that second payment we have to make on the acquisition of the property. This interfund loan will then allow us to pay ourselves back with that future TIF revenue. So, that was part of the TIF spending plan, but we'd need to do approve the interfund loan portion of it as well. So, that's what this action is.
I would introduce the resolution authorizing the interfund loan.
I'll second.
That resolution introduced by Marv and seconded by James. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Farreg. Quaid.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Okay, and that carries. Thank you. Next item is the Cottonwood, Cottonwood County Home Initiative Program, Revised Guidelines and Recommendations. This has went through the other two entities, and we're the final one on the list. The county has approved with a cap now of, I believe, $320,000. That same amount was utilized by the school district. So, included in here is a recommendation of which sets the city of Wyndham's, at least a recommendation from... Steve? Is to set that at $320,000 is included in that. So, otherwise, pretty much everything else the same, Steve?
Yep, everything else is the same. Just some quick numbers for those of interested. Since the six years of the program, we have done 23 homes in Wyndham, single family. And then, of course, there's the 37 at Guardian Inn that were done through this as well. Those are multifamily. In the six years prior to the program, I believe there were six homes done in that period of time. So, you can see there has been an impact to it. Now, is everything, you know, due to the program? You know, probably not. I mean, but, you know, it's certainly gained incentive. And so, it's been around six years, and this extension would send it out another three years. And as the mayor highlighted, the school district has approved it. The county has approved it. And the EDA board is recommending approval of extension of the tax abatement program with the cap of, the abatement applies to the first $320,000 of value.
And part of the discussion at the EDA was while the EDA and the city couldn't do something different, it just seemed to make sense to be consistent with the other two, the county and the school district. So, that's what they agreed upon.
I think that was a good move by EDA. Okay. This is in the form of a resolution. EDA members, since you made the recommendation, are you ready to recommend the approving of this resolution?
I would introduce the resolution.
I'll second.
We got them both. Thanks for the introduction, Marv and James. Any questions? Steve, a roll call?
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Farreg.
And that carries. Thank you. It'll be good. Let's see what we get in another three years.
Yep.
Proposal. This is for the reduction of special assessment tax forfeiture property, 1424th Street. I'm going to let Steve explain this one.
Sure. As you may remember, there was a dilapidated home at 1424th Avenue. A number of years ago, the city did take some action to demolish that home. There was a number of liens that were on that property. And until those liens got off the property, there was no action that could be taken. While in the meantime, the lien holders didn't pay the taxes on it because there was no value there. So, that went to the county for tax sale. The city had approximately $18,138 of expenses into the demo for that. The property did now come up on tax sale within the last month. There were no bidders on it because it had this large assessment for it. I had talked to a couple of interested parties and said, you know, the council could consider reducing that assessment if there was something going to be built on it. There's going to be some taxes that were going to be generated from it. But if it was for, you know, a larger yard or something like that, I think the council might have a harder time waiving or forgiving that assessment just because there was an investment of tax dollars, you know, to demolish that dilapidated home. So, I've had, like I said, conversation with several parties. A potential bidder at that county tax forfeiture sale saw the property did not sell. They approached me and said, I'd be interested in the parcel to build a home on if the city would reduce the amount of the assessment. And in conversation with them, there is still value to that land because it is a buildable lot. There's, you know, serves or utilities to it. And so, the individual said I would be willing to basically split it with the city. 50% for the assessment. I will build a home within, you know, a period of time, maybe about three-year period of time. And then through that, you know, you recover the rest of your investment. I said, well, that's not a decision I could make. That would be, you know, action that the council would have to take. But before we get too far into it, resolutions and legal work and that kind of thing, I wanted to get your input on whether or not I should proceed with this discussion or not, or if you had a different number in mind, you know, I can convey that as well. But this was the discussion point I wanted to have with you. So, I'm looking for direction at this point in time. Should there be interest in this from the council, we can hammer out an agreement, get that done, get something, put, you know, pen to paper, get that to you, make sure legal reviews it, and then you can have a vote on it at a future meeting.
Well, Steve, I cannot remember this property. Can you help me with that?
Yeah, it is down, as you go on Cottonwood Lake Drive, and you make the bend on 24th there to go back out to like where Smith Appliances. I believe Mr. Haken lives next door to it.
Okay.
And I don't remember the other property owner. Sorry.
Yeah, and that's where I thought it was, but I thought it was on Cottonwood Drive is why I asked, but it's on 24th.
24th, yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's where it turned itself down.
Confused me. Okay. Okay, I'll take council comments. On, on, do you want Steve to proceed with something like this, or is there a consideration of additional dollars? I guess my thought, just an initial thought was, is there, will there be certainty that it will be built or it is not gifted to, I mean, you know, is there, will there be after legal stuff?
That, that would be part of the agreement, that, that, the waiver will occur for that period of time. If the home is not built at the end of that three-year period of time, then the rest of that assessment would be due back to the city. So, essentially, the D... So essentially, they'd be buying the lot for the eighteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars we have in it.
I think that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I think splitting it in half and having something developed on it is better than leaving it there. I will note that, you know, during the, I don't even know how many years that it's been, do we have in there, what year it was taken, I mean, it's, it's been a while. About five years or whatever. The two people on either side of that property have been the ones to mow that and maintain that area. The city hasn't had to come and. Yeah, well, yeah, but, I mean, you know, we're looking at, you know, the neighbors have been nice to take care of that in between the two properties. And so I don't think we should, you know, just assume that they're gonna continue to do that either. So it'd be nice to have somebody actually develop and do something with that.
You know, I do, I do think that's good, and I, I agree with you, but the only thing I would question on it, has that opportunity then been provided to other public members of getting a lot? You know, if, if, if I knew it, could I say, well, I'd buy it for ten thousand?
Everybody had the opportunity to go to the public auction that the county had and bid on it. Nobody bid on it, and only one party then came and approached us. So they've taken the initiative to do that. We've let be known, I've, as Jenny mentioned, the neighbors had been looking after it. And I've talked to both of the neighbors and told them exactly the same thing. Come up with a proposal of what you would build and we would entertain it. And that's been out there a couple of years and they've not, you know, had interest in doing that, so.
I just know what people do watch the city council meeting and they may say, well, I'd give you ten thousand, and then you have, well, I guess if somebody wants to bid higher, get ahold of Steve.
And get ahold of us.
Right? Well, I, that was my question, though. So you better do it soon because it's councils, is consensus okay, Steve, or how do you?
I was looking for direction. I've gotten that. I can get something together and.
And if somebody else contacts you, Steve, you'll have to deal with that.
Well, we can have a discussion and see what they're willing to do. And if you have two proposals, that can come to the council and you can decide what you'd like to do. But two is better than the none we've had in the last five years.
I totally agree, and I'm happy this person came forward and did that offer. It'd be good to see new construction there because it is a nice lot there. Okay. Consensus accepted, Steve, so. The Community Center Commission Recommendations HVAC. Here we go. Spend some money.
Just approve the budget.
I'm Tim Snyder from the Wyndham Community Center. We, this has been a long process on these HVACs, and it actually started back in April. And that was before I came on in July, and we've kind of gone round and round, Jim's on our commission. It's been a long process of looking at the bids from three different companies. We had decided with one, and we saw that we had omitted something else. And from that point, when we reviewed them the next time, we got into looking at warranties and what was all-inclusive in the bid. And that's, that's what we kind of did. Some didn't quite have it all, but we are looking for recommendation from the city council to approve the bid from Elite Mechanical. This would be one of the ten-ton units up on, on the top and one of the five-ton units for a cost of thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. All three companies did point out that after the first of the year, that costs would be going up on these units. And so we felt it was best to act now to save some money and get it ordered before the first of the year. These are the originals from when the center was built, so one of the units, the compressor is, is starting to fail, so.
And these are from nineteen ninety-nine, was it?
Yeah.
Council wished to take action on approving this, and once again, the cost was total, I guess, thirty-two. Two fifty. Thirty thousand, two fifty. Okay, was in total.
I'll make the motion to approve. And I would second.
Okay, motion Jim, seconded by Marv. Any discussion? All in favor signify by answering after Steve asks a question.
Just to confirm that the prices with this quote are good and will be good until tomorrow, at least when you order them.
Right, right. I went down and spoke with them, and they said that they were standing by that price. Just between the last time the bid was, the units had gone up, I think, almost seven hundred dollars just in four months, so. But yes, they said this, this price is, is firm.
Okay, Steve, let's quick take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Anything else? What's going on for the next week or two?
Well, December twenty-ninth and thirtieth, Inflatables for Fun. We are bringing up three bouncy houses up to the community center. We put out some flyers on our Facebook page. It's been in the shopper and in the citizen, KDOM. We are going to run it from eight o'clock in the morning till eight o'clock at night, and we put on their reservations encouraged, but not required. Just meaning that if there's a guaranteed time that you want to come up there, call and get a reservation because we can only have twenty-five kids total in them. So we decided to do hour-long sessions and hopefully burn some Christmas sugar out of them. And I've been getting a lot of positive responses, so we'll see how it goes this year.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we have a resolution, State of Minnesota Department of Public Safety Joint Powers Agreement. Steve, I did not read that. Can you give us a briefing?
Sure. So the city of Wyndham accesses Bureau of Criminal Apprehension information for both our PD and for our prosecuting attorney, which is the county attorney's office. You may recall seeing these documents earlier. We passed these in twenty twenty-one. They were sent off and done on our end, and somewhere in the system, they came up as un-executed by the state. And so they are asking that we re-approve these. We did have in our files an executed copy, including the state's signatures. However, we're down the rabbit hole here and they would like us just to update these. So essentially, what this will gain us is another year on our five-year agreement and have to redo it less soon as we would the other one. But the city attorney has reviewed this and has approved it. So we're asking that you re-approve use of the joint powers agreements on behalf of the city of Wyndham for its city attorney and PD with BCA.
Is this a resolution, Steve?
Yes, it is.
Someone care to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution approving the State of Minnesota Joint Powers Agreement with the city of Wyndham on the behalf of its city attorney and police department.
Second.
Resolution introduced by Jenny, seconded by Jason. Any discussion? Steve, roll call.
Yes.
Sherman, yes. Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Farag. Quaid.
Yes.
Street Department is up. These are personnel hiring recommendations. Pardon me? Well, yes.
Good evening. John Ketsmerk, Street and Parks Superintendent. We had a candidate for the position of the Street and Parks Maintenance Worker. He accepted the offer, so more or less, I'm coming for the committee here to see if it's approved and everything. Little background, the position was advertised, two applicants received with two interviews, and we picked one of the two. And his name is Jeremy Johnson. He'll be starting at step five and advanced to step six and successfully completing his six-month probation. January ninth.
January ninth. Okay, is there a motion to approve that request?
I would make that a motion to approve the hiring of Jeremy Johnson to our street department.
Second.
Motion made by Jenny, seconded by Jason. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Did you want to comment on the liquor store hire too, or John? Oh, no, okay. We'll use the other John. Excuse me, we do have a memo here somewhere in the pile. I'll read Steve's. John.
John Nelson, liquor store manager. So back in November, I had met with Personnel Committee, and it was approved to, or recommended from Personnel Committee to you guys to create a part-time union clerk position down at the liquor store. With that, it was advertised both internally and externally. We had no internal applications. We did receive five applications from the general public, which is more applications than we've received for a non-union part-time position. From that, we were able to set up three interviews. One did not show. We did those last night, Jenny, Quaid, and myself. With that is our recommendation to hire Marcia Forsyth at step four on the twenty twenty-two union wage scale. And then with the six-month probationary period, upon successful completion of that, she would receive another step increase.
Council, any questions? It is good to see that you had more applicants. That was kind of the hopes of the Personnel Committee anyway, when we discussed it, that that might generate some more people. So appreciate you getting that out and get that done. Is there approval of that recommendation?
I'll make the motion to approve hiring Marcia for the liquor store part-time union clerk position.
Second.
Motion Jenny, seconded by Jason. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, John. Anything else going on?
Nope, business as usual. Busy. Apparently, there's a snowstorm coming or holiday coming. So today was pretty chaotic down there, and I'm sure next few days will be. One thing to kind of remember is as the weather turns, we will do what we can to keep the store open. But if weather deteriorates and it's in best interest, best interest for the workers and our customers, we will make the decision to close early, and we will get that information out via our Facebook page, the newspaper, the radio, and we'll get it out as soon as we can with some time. So we won't just close the doors and walk away, so.
And then you are closed Christmas Day by statute, correct?
Correct. Statute states that we must be closed by eight PM on Christmas Eve, but we do close at five PM on Christmas Eve. We are closed Christmas Day, and we will be closed New Year's Day this year. So sales on a Sunday or a weekday just don't generate enough to be open on a holiday, so.
Very good. Thank you. Again, Community Center, on-call help.
Tim Snyder, Community Center Director. We have kind of talked about this before, about trying to get someone up on just a part-time for pre and post events. And I would like to recommend to the city council approving the hiring of Alex Blum for the position of on-call part-time help at the wage of twelve fifty per hour. Use Alex mainly where we need another strong buck in there and when it comes to tables and some of that. And he, I've, I've already called him a few times and had him come up. I know for the gun show, we, we would have been there for hours if it wasn't for his youth and strength loading tables. But he's a senior in high school, goes to Mountain Lake High School, and he just lives two blocks down from the community center. So he's kind of been the one that I've called when I needed another guy. But nice kid. Alan, he job shadowed me and I had to bring him down and show him to Steve, and nice kid.
Very good. Sounds like we got a recommendation to approve that, so I'd entertain that, council.
I'd make the motion to approve the hiring of Alex Blum.
I'll second.
Motion by Marv, seconded by Jenny. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Yeah, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There you go. Thank you. Appreciate you bringing that in. New business. Old business. No, we're done with that one unless you have something, Steve.
You had a.
Oh, we did. We added.
An item we added that was, it's fairly perfunctory.
Yeah, I forgot what it was.
It is the EDA, so. Will we continue?
No, this, or yes, this is the, will be the third amendment request. And this is for the, the SCDP program, of which, as we said earlier, the reason we added this is because of materials that were not available and extended out the project. So to help out that program, we'd like to approve this and authorization for Steve to sign that request for, pardon me?
Gotta be the mayor.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Oh, I thought we had to authorize you. Okay, well, authorize me to sign that. And this will last until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Could we gain that authorization?
I'd make the motion to approve that extension request.
Second.
Motion's been made by Marv, seconded by Jason. Okay, and upon recommendation of Steve and EDA, Mary. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Is that here to sign tonight, by the way? Okay, it won't be. Okay, very good. Contractor payments. We have the Semstone Project, Voss Plumbing and Heating. This is pay request number two. What's been done for that one, Steve?
As we talked about at the EDA meeting, they did, no, they did recommend approval of the pay request. Voss Plumbing and Heating, who's doing the demo out there, there was a little bit of site work done, and they brought a job trailer out. They can't do much until Semstone, you know, completely moves out to the new facility on North Industrial Park. But we wanted to show some activity yet in twenty twenty-two. So we got this little bit of request from Sem, or from Voss. We've run that through EDA. They recommended approving it. We also have now talked with Deed as well, and they're good with us approving it. But they actually asked us to hold the pay request back to the state until we had a larger number to ask for. So, but we still do need to pay our contractor, so there is a match involved in it anyway. So this will go against the match that we owe on the project, but we probably will not get reimbursement from Deed until twenty twenty-three sometime, when some additional work is done. They don't want to process a bunch of small pay requests. They'd like to have a very significant one, so we'll hold these for a little bit, so.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the Voss Plumbing and Heating Pay Request Number Two?
So moved.
Second.
Motion Jason, seconded by Marv, to approve the Voss Heating Pay Request Number Two in the amount of ten thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Airport, Beacon Replacement Project. This is Neo Electrical Solutions. This is pay request number one in the amount of twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. On our twenty twenty-two capital improvement project list, we had replacement of the beacon out at the airport. Not the tower, but just the beacon that was failing. Mr. Grunig probably attest, there's been a number of times electrical departments been out there over the years with a bucket truck to fix either the gears or the bulbs. We did get that replaced with partnership with FAA and the state. The cost of that is the twenty-four thousand, five ninety. They were out, brought the new head, got that mounted. It's up, it's going and operating. Talked with the airport manager today, and he said it is very bright and it's kind of like, almost like a laser type of a light that, looking at it. that, looking at it head-on, he said in aeronautics, from five thousand to ten thousand feet, you're supposed to be able to see it from about thirty-five miles to see it. So there, so you can see it up in that. Now, Mr. Ketsenberg lives fairly close there and will also attest that it is brighter than the old light. So he may have to buy a shade or talk to our airport manager for that. So, but we are requesting approval of the two, twenty-four thousand five ninety. It has been approved by the contractor and the engineer. So we will get this submitted and get it closed out this fiscal year if we can. So.
Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim, for the motion and Jenny for the second. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Is there?
Oh, shoot. Marv?
Is there any reason because it's so bright? It's not the ordinary beacon that would be placed in an airport or?
No, no, this is exactly the one that is replaced in general aviation airports. Not, not as powerful as some of them at a commercial airport. So if you went to MSP or someplace like that, it's, it's much more powerful. But for a general aviation airport of our size, this is the appropriate size. The LED, you know, hopefully will, you know, it's going to last longer and have a better, better life on it. And it's, yeah, that's the reason for the replacement.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are about to counsel comments. Jenny?
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and then keep an eye on the weather these next few days. I would suggest going out and getting your supplies and things you need in case we just need to kind of hunker down and stay warm for a few days. But if you have travel plans, make sure you're watching that and stay safe. And then just a reminder, the community center, you know, having those inflatables there, the bouncy house stuff, December twenty-ninth and thirtieth, what a great thing to have available to our kids. Like Tim said, burn off all that Christmas energy. Or if you're stuck in your house for days with your kids without them going to school, what a wonderful place to go and let them just be active in a warm environment. So again, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth of December at the community center from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Thanks, Jenny. Jim?
Good meeting. I think we accomplished a few things anyway. And from what Jenny was saying and what John was saying, if you got to have anything for Christmas, you better get down there early.
Marv?
I would just wish everybody Merry Christmas also. And then also thank everybody for their input in our arena issue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marv. Next, I am going to talk a little bit about Jason. And I got to talk about you first. I want to thank you for your help over the last couple of years here to accommodate that open position on the City of Wyndham. Appreciate that very much. Your demeanor in the public setting is very welcomed, and I appreciate everything you've done and commented through the process. So now I'll let you talk after giving you that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick little clarification for the public. I have not given up on city council or Wyndham by any stretch. There's a little technicality in the Minnesota statutes, which just prevented me from being on the ballot. So just so you know, that's the clarification. I am very thankful for this opportunity. Thank you, Mayor, and everyone. It's been great. I love serving Wyndham in this way. And I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. Steve?
Just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone in the public. Thank you to Jason for his service here on the council. And thank you to council member Farag, who was unable to be here this evening. I think she would also like to wish Merry Christmas to everyone and thank the military and the folks that are served and had served for keeping us safe. And I think in January, when we do our certificate of appreciation to Mr. Sherman and Ms. Farag, they can maybe take a minute and make a couple of more comments. So this may be not your last opportunity. So, but thank you very much.
No, absolutely. And I do also thank Lisa. I really wanted to give her a bad time. I hope she's listening tonight. But thank you, Lisa. You know, I think it was a great opportunity, opportunity. I appreciated your interest when I called you and asked you about that position. Very much appreciated. We welcomed you and you did a great job. So with that, thanks to Lisa. Merry Christmas to everyone. It's a special time of year and give thanks this time of year. And I'm very proud of this council. A lot of great discussion that this council's had over the past year or two years. And I just think you've tackled a lot of items. And together, everybody's best interest is the City of Wyndham and our larger community. So we all appreciate that. We appreciate all our department heads. Thank you to them over the years that have been spent. Thanks to our emergency responders who keep us safe in this community. To the, to the police, the fire, the ambulance, I hope I'm not forgetting anybody, you know. And so just overall, a very powerful word is saying thank you to people. And it's very powerful. You see somebody on the street this week, wish them a Merry Christmas and, and thank them for being in our community. Thank you, and we're adjourned by unanimous consent.